I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. A motion is ordered for the approval of the closed session agenda. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Second by Ralston. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 that the PWCS Board enters closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss to consider the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees, appointees, or others of the school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to discuss consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to consult with division counsel regarding a specific legal matter involving PWCS personnel which matter requires the advice counsel under Virginia Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. And four, to consult with division counsel regarding a specific legal matter requiring the advice of counsel under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return open session in approximately one hour. We do not have any closed session action items, and we'll move on to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second it.
Discussion? Please vote.
The vote is five yes, two not present at vote, one absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session certification. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712 this closed session the Prince William County School Board meeting of September 4, 2019 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in closed meeting in which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, one not present at vote, one absent. Motion passed.
In response to community requests to hear more about the many good things happening in our county and school division, we'll continue to kick off our meetings this year with Positively PWCS Presentations. Tonight's Positively PWCS presentation spotlights and recognizes the many people who work diligently to prepare our schools for its opening. Superintendent Dr. Walts will introduce our presentation.
Thank you Chairman Latif and members of the board. As you can imagine, it takes a lot of work behind the scenes to prepare more than 100 school and division facilities to open for day one of school. Tonight's presentation is by John Winley, Director of Facility Services, who will share a small sampling of the many construction and upgrade projects that took place over this past summer. Mr. Winley.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. So, good evening Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. I really appreciate the time this evening to highlight some of the fantastic accomplishments that Facility Services has completed over the past summer. And when I say completed over the past summer, we only have 10 weeks to do a lot of this work, and it's a lot of work in 10 short weeks. So, really, we have on our website a page that we highlight all of the projects. No way I could touch on every one of them tonight. There's quite a few. So, as you're aware, our construction department, we build schools, renovate schools, add additions onto facilities. So, quite a bit of that went on. What you might not be aware is the Facilities Management Group that does a lot of behind-the-scenes work that might not get noticed as often. So, wanted to try to highlight some of the things that they did this year, this summer, and just really thank them. I appreciate it. They make us look very good. A lot of what they do doesn't get noticed, but they really make us look very good. So, as you're aware, we did the artificial turf fields at Stonewall and Woodbridge High School. Some of our staff, Facilities Management Group staff helped in that, in those projects. So, I think we upgraded kitchen equipment at approximately 30 kitchens. So, take 30 restaurants and think of what it might take to upgrade a lot of equipment in those kitchens. We upgraded 30 kitchens. We had new roofs being installed at Potomac and Belmont Elementary Schools. Chiller replacements at Mary Williams and Cedar Point Elementary Schools. Rooftop units, a lot of rooftop units at Fred Lynn Middle and several other schools, but the most major was Fred Lynn. That was quite a project. And new entry doors at Stonewall and OP, Stonewall High School in Osborn Park. Quite an improvement to the school's front entries. So, the door, that's Minneville, Minneville Elementary School, had the addition built. Potomac views roof, some of the turf fields. And I can't say enough about them. We also did quite a bit of work at Woodbridge High School in the weight room. The weight room expansion, that's ongoing. It's not complete yet, but it's ongoing. We're HVAC work in the pit for the, for Woodbridge High School. Osborn Park, we finished a staff bathroom on the second floor for the ladies' room so that there is more restrooms up there for the staff. Potomac High School, boiler replacement. Library carpet at Stonewall and OP. Folding partition at Freedom High School. So, we were all over the county this summer, and not to mention their day job, so to speak, of relocating classroom trailers for the whole summer. And I think we did about 70 of them this year, which was a pretty high year. That's, we do probably somewhere between 50 and 80 a year, 70 of them this year. And all of them were ready for school. So, I really appreciate all of the work. About 150, 160 staff in that Facilities Management Group did quite a bit, and pitched in where they had to, elsewhere as well, with getting schools ready anywhere that they needed to be. They were ready to pitch in. So, just wanted to take a moment to really thank them and highlight their achievements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Dr. Walts? Ms. Jessie.
Mr. Winley, I admire you guys. I just, you know, and Amy White's out there, and there's several people, and we were principals, and we know how much work you do. When I was over at Jenkins making a site visit, I kept running into people saying, "Oh, I fixed your HVAC. Remember me? I did your HVAC. I did your roof. I did your addition." And I just kept running into these people, and they were just working, working, working. And, you know, my favorite, one of my favorite people is Don Mason, who I thought, "School is not going to open. I'm not going to have this front." We were trying to get a kiss-and-drive lot there, and the road in front, it was full of mud. And I said, "Don, this thing is not going to be ready." I think it's supposed to be ready on Tuesday. And his response was that, "Mrs. Jessie, the bus wheels may be hot, the wheels may be hot to the, to the, to the actual road. In other words, there may be tar flying, but this building, this is going to be done." And you've always done it. And I, when I was, I decided to be a person to name that maintenance bill after Randy Dash, Dasher, because they would come in with all these sheets and explain everything. And as a principal, they came with some, you know, the punch lists. Remember the punch lists? And so few people. So, I admire you. I know you don't have the help that you need to have, and Al, you have inherited a wonderful, wonderful staff of people, and I just appreciate everything that you've done for, not just for me, but for the school system. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. I should strike the gavel. A little out of practice. There will be a moment of silence at the request of Mr. Gil Trentum of the Brentsville District. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. If we have any students here to lead in the pledge? Is there any students yet? Good, they're probably doing homework. So, we'll just stand, and I'll go ahead and lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. So, next we'll be moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston. Any discussion? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to talk about item 14.15. I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Wallingford.
You know, our screens are frozen, Willie. What's 14.15?
Summer contract awards.
Several contract awards.
Summer contract awards, July and August 2019.
Mr. Wallingford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford.
Question, Mr. Walling, Deutsch.
Yes, I was about to ask them.
Go.
Sorry. So, I guess the summer contract awards, July, August 2019, we state that we don't have any contracts over $250,000 over the summer?
That is correct.
Okay. And I guess, what's the importance about that $250,000 threshold number?
The $250,000 threshold number is a number that about, I'm going to guess at this, about five to seven years ago, it was actually $500,000. And before that, and I may be wrong about this, to be honest, but before that, I believe there was no threshold. The importance of that number is to convey information to the board at a level that you've determined, and that's that $250,000 number you mentioned.
So, anything over that $250,000 number the board would have to approve?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. So, over the summer, I received a phone call from a reporter that, asking about, about a $450,000 expenditure for Colgan Pool, of course, and I think in accompanying maybe four to six weeks shutdown of the pool that was being discussed at the time. I guess that phone call came to surprise because I hadn't heard anything about it before then. Can you walk through what happened there?
Sure, Mr. Deutsch. What happened there is the $250,000 threshold I refer to applies to contracts that are being awarded, but not to some contracts, like contracts for food, requirements contracts for food and other items. That contract with the vendor was actually a requirements contract, or we believed was a requirements contract, that hadn't exceeded $250,000. It was, frankly, it was a, it was a control error that, that my staff made at the time, and that's something that we've looked at, talked about, and we're going to modify that process as we move forward so we don't have those kinds of mistakes like we had in the past.
And the contract referred to there was approved when, roughly?
Yeah, I honestly don't have that information. I can get it for you if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And I guess, if we have big changes in expenses, because usually we budget a lot of stuff during budget season, about a half a million dollars is usually a big, a big expense, I would think. Where, where are we going to pull that money from?
It depends on the specific issue. So, if there's a half a million dollar change, and a good examples, change orders that we've had recently, that half a million dollars would have to come from either reserves in this case, in the Capital Projects Fund, or reserves that we have elsewhere in the general fund. So, again, it just, it really depends on what the issue is and in which fund that accounting would take place.
Okay. And then, so what, what was going to be done with that contract and expense, and what ended up happening with it?
The contract was canceled. There was no expense, and thus far, we've done nothing further with regard to that contract.
Okay. But what was, what was being proposed to be done, and like, what was the whole point of that $450,000 expense? What were we going to do with it?
The $450,000 was to make some repairs at the Aquatics Center.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Please, any further discussion? Okay, great. Please vote on the consent agenda. And while we're doing that, just remind the board members, the consent agenda is sent out days in advance, and if there's any concerns about things that shouldn't be on consent, pull them off, and we'll be happy to move them into Board Matters or other places.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to citizen comments on the agenda and non-agenda items. It looks like we have 15 people today. Tonight, we will go through all of them in one run. Everyone that signed up in advance, everyone who came to the door and will get a chance to speak. So, I'll call the names of the first 10 folks to please come and have some, a seat up front. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up, and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. The first 10 are Marjorie Churchborne, Catherine Henderson, Peter Vorschka, Kim Hosen, Holly Wooton, Kelly Martin, Charles Ronco, Aurora Hurtado, Janine Woolrob, Richard Jessie. Sorry, Ms. Marjorie Churchborne can go first.
Good evening all. My name is Marjorie Churchborne. This year, I'm celebrating my sixth year anniversary as your partner at American Heart Association and American Stroke Association. As I've shared with some of you before, I began working for the mission of AHA after losing both of my loving parents to heart disease and stroke. I spent a wonderful Christmas with them, and then suddenly, three days later, we lost them both on the same day. I needed to feel as if I was making a difference for others so that more people could learn warning signs, CPR, and learn how they could take care of their heart health. American Heart Association is the leading health organization helping to fight heart disease and stroke, so I knew where I needed to be. Therefore, I joined their team, and I pledge to put my heart into what I do every day because I want to believe that I'm making my parents proud, and I want to make a difference to help others. I feel so lucky to be your heart partner. Whether you are students, staff, families, in our community, it doesn't matter. All of you who help make a difference are all heart heroes. The mission of American Heart is to be a relentless force for a world of longer, healthier lives. We partner with our schools to help raise awareness and life-saving donations. Heart disease is our nation's leading cause of death. However, in some cases, it can be 80% preventable through lifestyle, lifestyle changes and choices, which is why education is the key. This is why we partner with schools and share, who share our passion for teaching those heart-healthy habits. We are saving and improving lives every year, thanks to school districts like Prince William County. Last year, more than half of the schools in Prince William County signed up to be my heart partner, and that has made an incredible impact. I'm here tonight to let you know that Prince William is once again number one district in the entire state of Virginia for support and promotion of heart health. AHA has approximately 7,000 participating school districts throughout the country. Out of 7,000, Prince William is 20 in the nation. A, a, hmm, a huge thank you to Dr. Walts, our amazing superintendent, school board leaders, Emily Utter, Beth Tominek, Fred Milbert, all of our heart partner administrators, physical educators, teachers, nurses, students, and families. You have made heart health a priority, and you have led by example. I would love to list every school that partners with us, but the good news is, that list is too long. So, please know that all of you who participated are truly appreciated, and you made this award possible. Our top 10 heart hero schools last year were Patty, Springwoods, Kyle R. Wilson, Alvy, Marshall, Ashland, Haymarket, and the top three were Gravely, Rosa Parks, and the Knoxville School. And this new school year, we've enhanced our programs to include physical, social, and emotional challenges, such as be more active, be kind to your heart and others, come to school prepared for the day ahead, choose water over sugary beverages, and pledge not to smoke or vape.
Thank you.
Our goal will be to try and get all of our schools engaged and signed up as heart partners, and have our students and staff choose one challenge, at least one, because any positive change can help make a difference for our hearts, and maybe we can set the examples for all those. We'd love to. Thank you, Prince William County Schools. You're truly a district full of heart.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Churchborne.
I have an award to present. If you guys would like to come up and join me, who helped make this happen, we could take a picture, maybe? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can y'all squeeze that way so we don't have the podium? It's too heavy to move. I can't see you, Mr. Trentum.
Can we hold up number one?
Yeah. Okay, are y'all ready? One, two, three, and one, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Catherine Henderson, is she here? Did I say this right? Okay, we'll move on to Peter Vorschka. Peter, Kim Hosen.
Thank you. My name's Kim Hosen. I'm with the Prince William Conservation Alliance. And over two years ago, when the school system was looking to locate a school on Chin Park originally, and then later on the adjacent property, we were engaged, and we were concerned about the quality of natural resources in the area, most especially from stormwater impacts. So, it looked like some were going to be inevitable, and to respond to those concerns, we asked and received, in the letter of commitments provided by the school system, for a commitment that would ensure that if damages occurred, the stream and ponds would be restored to their original condition. And the school system did go through and did a baseline study so that we would know what level the restoration needed to occur. So, now the school is finished, and there have indeed been significant damages to the stream and ponds, and we are here to ask you all to follow through and complete that restoration. I saw an email today that appeared, really, appeared to respond to that by saying that there would be an effort at the end of the week to remove silt, really a bucket brigade, and then the schools would monitor the area for two years. This is not adequate, and it's not what was promised. A restoration needs to occur. There have been significant damages. It's affecting the park, and it's affecting the surrounding community. So, we, I am here today to urge you to follow through with that. Complete a restoration plan, vet it with the community, make sure people are informed, and provide a timeline for when that will occur. And that is really the sum total of it, just to move forward and also to fund the restoration. So, all these pieces need to be in place. And since I have a few seconds left, I would also like to express my, our disappointment for your considering a new, the 14th school site on another environmentally sensitive area in a spot that would have really serious traffic impacts, no matter what happened. So, we would urge you to help us all skip the community outcry part and move right to find another site. Thank you very much.
Holly Wooton.
I'm Holly Wooton, an environmental engineer with 30 years' experience for USCPA as a water and wastewater auditor, site inspector, and permit writer. I was the adoptive stream coordinator for Prince William Soil and Water Conservation District for three years, as an employee, and 10 years as a leader. I raised my kids here in the county, near the lake, as we called it, that Kim was just talking about. And it isn't anything like it used to be before the elementary school Jenkins was just put in. So, that's what I'm here to talk about, the same thing. I really appreciate your help. Around June 23, 2018, the first big rainstorm occurred, just as they had clear-cut the entire elementary school site. It was a huge field of clay. When it rained, a huge slug of sediment came into the pond. This occurred after each major rainfall for three, for seven weeks. In mid-July, I filed a pollution complaint for Who's Run, which is the stream that runs down behind Chin, and damage to the stormwater retention pond on Maori Court, which, where it flows to. And from there, it flows on into the Okeechobee, it's in the Okeechobee River Reservoir. So, the pond, a few doors down from my house, has been continuously turbid and full of thick orange clay since June 23, 2018. I participated with Mr. Dinjigal on several group walkthroughs and group emails, and was told that they would get back to me about solutions, but nothing happened as far as remediating the damage. June 26, 2018, and many other times, I walked the walking path behind Chin where the sediment control for the elementary school was intended to take place. It's where Who's Run originates. That's the name of that stream. There were minimal sediment control structures, and the silt fences were bulging with clay that had been bulldozed right into them. Silt fences are not retaining walls. They are supposed to be placed at a sufficient distance away from the construction to prevent migration of soil from the site perimeter. Again, they are not retention walls. Due to a combination of bad luck, that is extensive rainfall last June and July, and poorly planned sediment controls, the clay sediment overwhelmed the walking path, the stream, and the pond many times. I have photos. Unfortunately, it was after the fact that the construction contractor for the elementary school had greatly improved their sediment control, control structures at the site. That's very nice, but most of the damage had occurred back in June, not when they fixed the controls at that point. A huge amount of sediment had left the school site and flowed into the pond, leaving it turbid from June through October, and the pond is now filled in with sediment, so much so that you can almost walk across to the middle of it. And there are some-
of the school from the originally planned location. At that time, representatives from Old Bridge Estates, as well as other concerned county residents, and the Prince William County Conservation Alliance, made the point that such construction would inevitably have detrimental impact upon the drainage area, Who's Run, running from Chin Park through our community. This was due not only to common sense, water flowing downhill and all, but also from our experience several years prior during the construction of Clark's Crossing Development on Old Bridge Road next to the Lake Ridge Nursery. Runoff from that site dumped an extreme amount of sediment into one of our ponds, which required remediation and restoration by the contractor. We were assured by the Prince William School System that they and the construction company would take all means necessary to prevent that from happening during the construction of Jenkins, as the previous speaker testified that did not happen. This assurance was documented in a letter of commitment from the Prince William County Schools Supervisor of Land Acquisition to Mr. David McGetigan, Long Range Planning Manager, and was dated February 16th, 2017. A key section of that letter states that the school division commits to monitor, maintain, and restore, emphasis on restore, not remediate, the stream channel. Since construction began on the elementary school, the residents of Old Bridge Estates have observed severe changes to the channel, as previously described, and noticeably, the pond on the other side of Smoke Town Road and the pond at the end of Chin Park at the west end of our community, they are, as described, filling in and becoming islands. We have pictures as well. I've served on the board of the Homeowners Association for almost a decade, and we've never had to consider dredging a pond until now. It is incontrovertible that the sedimentation of the stream and ponds are due to the construction of Jenkins. There have been no other construction projects or causes in the area at this time. It is disappointing that more is not done during construction, yet here we are with the letter of commitment in hand, and we are simply and reasonably requesting that such restoration be done expeditiously and completely. After notifying us and our county district supervisor and Dr. Jesse, the members of the board, I'm sorry, wrong page, and the associate superintendent for support services called me today, who assured me that the schools, as the developer quote-unquote, will work to correct any stream-pond impact as a result of our construction activity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. Charles Ronco.
Good evening, and welcome to another start of a great school year. All right. So first of all, before I even get started, I want to thank Facilities Management, because they really did do a fantastic job. You guys are unsung heroes, really. I also want to thank the board publicly for the vote that was done at the last school board meeting at the end of the school year regarding the zoning of the 13th High School, that you really, you really did an amazing thing there, and I just want to say publicly that that was a tremendous step forward, and I'm very thankful that we were able to help students at schools that are in high need, and we are actually going to be able to direct funds properly to help those schools and those students, and we did a great thing, and you should be proud of yourselves, and I'm very proud of you. Thank you. But I come to you today because I have a crazy idea. We have a capital improvement plan that goes out decades. We know when we're building schools, we know where we're building schools roughly. We have a technology improvement plan that goes out almost as far, that talks about how we're going to improve our technology infrastructure, our software updates, our hardware updates. What about having a staffing improvement plan? A plan that would actually be able to say that where we could take information from the building and staffing of the new schools that are coming down the road, projected retirements, because we know that information as well, we have growth of student population, we have departmental needs, we have VDOE targets, we have all of these things that say, in the future, we should be staffing like this, and put a plan together so that we could actually be able to project new staffing plans, new staffing hires for coming years. So there would be many benefits to this. For example, human resources could project staffing needs for recruitment purposes. We could go to teaching schools and say, hey, look, you know, you're going to graduate in a couple of years, and you know what? We're going to have a whole bunch of positions open for you in that, in that timeline. We could lay out a plan for reducing class size reduction, and actually put that out there. We could address plans to address any new SOQ targets and other priority staffing issues. We could, this could assist in the negotiation with the board of county supervisors, to be able to say to them, hey, this is where we're going, and this is what we're going to be looking for. We could avoid the picking of winners and losers when it comes to department issues and markups with departments and all of the budgeting process. And we could address community concerns when there is a public call for more, or sometimes less, of certain types of employee. So this kind of thing would actually be a tool that we could use for the future, and I just suggest that the idea be considered. Thank you so much, and I hope everyone has a great school year. Have a great time.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Ronco. Aurora Hurtado.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Walts. You know, with everybody posting their cute first-day-of-school pictures, I almost want to take one for my first school board meeting of the year, but, you know, several items that I wanted to talk to you tonight. Number one, I really hope there is a new site being considered for the 14th High School. The site on Prince William and Holy Road is problematic for traffic, the community around it, the environment, and it would exacerbate the equity issues in our community. Number two, can we please consider updating our older schools before spending $150 million on a new one? All students deserve world-class facilities. There are many studies that support the idea that students perform better on natural light environment. So why are we continuing to deny it to students at our older high schools? Why is natural light not a priority for Woodbridge and Garfield? Please make it a priority. I am sure the cost is high, I'm very well aware of that, but negatively impacting our students' potential, leaving them behind the other students that have access to natural light, it comes at a cost, too. The fact that we cannot see it, or we cannot easily measure it, doesn't mean that it is not there. Also, number three, I would like to get a better understanding of how schools are prioritized for specialty and after-school programs. You know, Woodbridge had its specialty program moved to Colgan years ago, so why do we have to wait until 2023 to get a new academic program? And also along with that, how do after-school programs get allocated? Is a program that a school board member works for, can it be just moved around or granted? How does it work? Is there a process that posted for after-school programs? I really would like to understand that better. And number five, bullying. I don't think schools can effectively enforce anti-bullying initiatives if students think that bullying works, because they get the perception that their school is being bullied by staff at Central. And I use the word perception, because I'm not implying that anything has actually happened. But you know, for us, perception is our reality. So I would like to encourage you to continue to enforce procedures that are conducive towards transparent communication. Parents and students may not be able to have a say on every decision that's made, but the perception that someone from Central is manipulating a coach or a principal, it can certainly be avoided by more open and transparent communications, where parents and students can understand how the decisions impacting them are being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine Woolrab.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your service to our county. My name is Janine Woolrab. My family and I have resided in Prince William County Old Bridge Estates for 15 years. I'm here to present a background timeline related to the Old Bridge Estates Smoke Town Road Pond and Channel issues. June 2018 deterioration became very apparent, no longer properly retaining or flowing, excessive sediment collecting runoff from the Southwest Channel. July 2018, I went to Prince William County Environmental Services Division about the negative effects occurring because of the elementary school construction site. I inquired about what's going to be done, and when had the pond last been dredged. I was told they'll check on it. I will leave pictures with the clerk of the original dig-out of the pond, so you can see how deep it was. August 2018, significant negative changes to water clarity and water level became obvious and are ongoing. Again, I made contact with the Environmental Services Division on their status of how they intended to contain the construction site runoff. I was told still looking into it. Currently, all of the previous issues remain, along with water flow rerouting causing flooding in areas that it should not, wildlife sustaining benefits decreased, and environmental erosion has occurred and continues to worsen. Fast forward, June 2019, one year after my initial inquiry, I was able to resume my focus on the deterioration of the pond, and since no apparent efforts by the Prince William County Environmental Services were made to dredge and restore, I reopened my inquiries. July 2019, I created a petition for my neighbors to show support of our community and a more actively seeking resolution for our pond. I presented this to the Old Bridge Estates Board of Directors and learned they, too, were communicating with the Prince William County Environmental Services, and being told that they will address the pond and channels after completion of the elementary school. August 2019, a meeting occurred at the Old Bridge Estates Pond, attended by representatives from the Old Bridge Estates Homeowners Association Management, Prince William County Environmental Services Division, Prince William County Public Officials, and Prince William, or Old Bridge Estates Homeowners. This led me to create an online petition for my community, again, in support of dredging and restoring the pond and channels. I'll provide a copy of that petition, and the signatures, and a picture of the pond's pre-construction state and the current state. So now here we are. So just to be clear, the Old Bridge Estates Pond deterioration is no fault of the Old Bridge Estates homeowners. There is no doubt that the construction of the new elementary school on Prince William County Parkway is the sole source for the pond and channel deterioration with the excessive sediment filling it, and resulting in it no longer functioning properly. Respectfully, Prince William County Public Officials, Dustin Construction Incorporated, and all responsible parties involved and aware of the damages caused, need to take the appropriate action for Prince William County taxpayers, our Prince William County environment, and ensure that that dredging and restoring occurs. So please and thank you now would be appreciated.
Mr. Richard Jesse.
Good evening, and welcome back. My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. This is sort of a historic start of the year. The Okeechobee District hasn't had a new school for 25 years, and the Jenkins Elementary School is the first one in 25 years in the Okeechobee District. In addition to that, we have three additions that were implemented and are being used, and Old Bridge had a renovation also of new addition. The net effect of that is, I think, there was 24 trailers at the elementary schools. Now there's only four. This is something that the administration should be proud of, and also, my wife, the school board member, who's fought for this for six years since she's been on the board. This has not come just as a gratitude or favor, it came from hard work and determination. And listening to the people today about the runoff, I'm sure the greatest of all time can help fix that and get that done. This should be a good year, and I hope we have a good season and get a lot done. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
We'll take the, I'll call up the next four or five to come on up. Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, Anthony, having a hard time reading, Dinoah, Dingo, and Eric Woolrab, and Valerie Gaffin, Gafney, Gafney, sorry. Dr. Flynn.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board, and Dr. Walts. I'm here tonight to implore you to focus on how we can do better for our kids this new school year and election season. We can all do better as parents, citizens, and neighbors by working together as a community to keep our kids safe, happy, and learning to their potential. And you, as the leaders of this county, you should make a promise to do better for our kids, too. While the administration and the board have had success with a growing graduation rate and above the state's average SOL scores, there are still schools in the county who have 25% to 30% of their kids not passing the SOLs, and I beseech you to figure out why. Is it teacher turnover in Title I schools? Lack of leadership? Poor facilities? Disaffected and unconnected communities and kids? Disengaged curriculum? Racial, cultural, or language differences? By determining answers to these questions and working to improve the school conditions for these kids, you will be that much closer to higher achievement overall, and to helping the kids who need you to do better. That's the idea. They need you, the school board and administration, to work together, despite your differences, to do better for all kids. The proof of success is not how well our already-successful kids are doing, but how well are we helping those kids who aren't? Therefore, you should ask yourselves this new school year. How will you guarantee that all kids have experienced and qualified teachers instructing them, and not just new, uncertified teachers every year? How will you ensure that all kids have principles that lead their teachers with determination, inspiration, and an open mind? How will you certify that teachers will be provided with the training to make curricular choices, to develop robust curriculum for all kids, not just the high-achieving ones? How will you ensure that all kids are learning in facilities with light, that allow for new technologies, space, and instructional methods to meet their social and academic needs? How will you pay your staff salaries that show appreciation and value for their professionalism? How will you pledge to not build new schools in places that segregate our kids even more? These are the questions you should be answering this new school year and election season, how you can do better for our kids, but mostly the kids who need you the most, because if we lift and value all our kids, not just the successful ones, then we will all rise as a county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Dingo.
Good evening. I'm, I'm here to discuss the Battlefield turf installation project. I had emailed Mrs. Satterwhite a week or so ago. My son plays lacrosse, and when it was announced that Battlefield would get turf, as you can imagine, last spring, all the parents were talking about it, but mostly from a rumor perspective, second, third-hand information as to what that impact would be this upcoming school year. I didn't know anything, so I emailed the administration athletic director to say, how does this work? Our suggestion, obviously, would be to start it in Memorial Day or June timeframe, end at the end of August, beginning of September, and then go from there, or possibly even start this November. From looking at the Stonewall turf install, I think that was awarded in March, and those were done sometime in early August. The feedback I give you all is, is nobody's clear on the process. So his parents were not clear, so all we have is second, third-hand information from our kids, from their coaches, from another team parent or manager. When I emailed the administration, the feedback I got from them was, they don't have a say in the matter, and they're in the dark as well. They don't know. These are the questions you should be answering this new school year and election season, how you can do better for our kids, but mostly the kids who need you the most. Because if we lift and value all our kids, not just the successful ones, then we will all rise as a county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Dingo?
Good evening. I'm here to discuss the Battlefield turf installation project. I had emailed Mrs. Satterwhite a week or so ago. My son plays lacrosse, and when it was announced that Battlefield would get turf, as you can imagine, last spring, all the parents were talking about it, but mostly from a rumor perspective, second, third-hand information as to what that impact would be this upcoming school year. I didn't know anything, so I emailed the administration athletic director to say, how does this work? Our suggestion obviously would be to start it in Memorial Day or June timeframe, end at the end of August, beginning of September, and then go from there, or possibly even start this November. From looking at the Stonewall turf install, I think that was awarded in March, and those were done sometime in early August. The feedback I give you all is nobody's clear on the process. So his parents were not clear. So all we have is second, third-hand information from our kids, from their coaches, from another team parent or manager. When I emailed the administration, the feedback I got from them was they don't have a say in the matter, and they're in the dark as well. They don't know very much. They're told they can't schedule games in April or May. Then they're told a couple of weeks later, don't schedule games in late April, beginning of May. So it's very much in flux. Obviously, they're trying to nail down the schedules. It doesn't just impact us, it impacts all the schools that we play against as well because they got to try to find schools that will accommodate maybe a flexible opportunity of scheduling a home game or a potential away game depending on when the award is made and when the installation starts. So I guess my ask is just to be clear and to communicate to the athletic director and the principal and to the parents, what is the intended schedule? When will it ideally be awarded? And we all know things change, but we're really in the dark and we're not clear on the process. And ideally, again, it would, you just pick a date, and if it slides a week or two, we get it. But if you could have, I don't know who facilities reports to, but if they could communicate to the athletic director and principal and whoever oversees them and come up with a plan that everybody can agree to, and then communicate it, that'd be my ask. Thank you.
Eric Walrob, Walrem, or yeah, Eric.
Thank you. My name is Eric Walrob. I'd like to start off by saying I had a pleasure serving the Air Force, our country, for 25 years, lived all over the country. We had two boys raised here in Prince William County. We lived here on and off 15 years. But comparing states and your school system between California, Georgia, Alabama, Kansas, and here in Virginia twice, elementary school and also high school, by far, Prince William County was head and shoulders above the rest of those states in education. So I appreciate the work you're doing, the work of your successors. You've built a great program, and we support you in continuing that for our children. They're very important. I was also a youth soccer coach here for many years for not only our district but other counties around here. Quality of education is great. We can, I say that is understated. Again, we appreciate what you all are doing. I want to reiterate that as a taxpayer and 862 community at Old Bridge Estates that may find the $450,000 we're missing for that one project from earlier, the money's probably there over the years, just a quick aside. Getting to the point, I think it's a common theme that we need schools, we need to educate our children, and there's also an environmental impact that you all I know consider. We've talked about the new high school. We've talked about the effect that Jenkins Elementary has had on our community at Old Bridge Estates. We know you do the due diligence, you'll take care of that. I'd like to finish the last paragraph from our homeowner president, Mr. Kelly Martin. Your work is greatly appreciated. We would again like to refer to the letter of commitment and emphasize that any such plan for remediation be openly and promptly communicated to Old Bridge Estates and Okeechobee District Supervisor, Ms. Lily Jesse. Specifically, that the findings of wetland studies and solutions made from post-observations of steam pond activity are shared with stakeholders, and that the remediation plan also be shared and available for comment before implementation. That's all we ask. Thank you for doing your diligence. We appreciate your service to the county.
Thank you. Valerie, Valerie Gafney? Okay. All right, so that will be the end of citizens' comments. Next, we'll move on to 16.01 Legislative Priorities, Matt Gilfoyle. And this item is for information. Does anyone have any, are you presenting a deck?
Just a quick, two slides.
Okay, two slides. That's all you get.
So yeah, I'm here this evening.
That's an excellent way to start out this school year, by the way.
I'm here to present to you your proposed legislative priorities for 2020. Just before I get going, let me introduce Mr. Jim Council, who's joined us here this evening, our representative in Richmond, who represents us well during the general So this evening, I'm just going to go real quickly over a couple of items for you just to highlight. You've already seen the legislative priority proposals a couple of times this summer. So all I want to really highlight for you, these are the top 10 areas of focus. They do align significantly to last year's priorities as well. And I do want to highlight, though, the first three items that you'll see on here. And the main reason, the main thing I'd like to point out with those three is that we have been working collaboratively with other large school divisions throughout Virginia to combine our efforts this year to really hone in on a few select priorities together. And these top three are three that we've agreed to work together on. The number one item that I really want to point to there is that that's the removal of the cap on key support positions that will directly help students. This includes mental health support, such as psychologists, as well as key technology instruction and support staff that will work directly with students. I'm also pleased to announce that V S B A has accepted for consideration three of our top 10 priorities for consideration in the overall V S B A legislative priorities for the session, including, as I mentioned, number one, but also number five, which is focused on removing the attendance requirement for accreditation, which is really a double hit and an unfunded mandate on our schools, and number nine, which is allowing higher level courses to count towards science sequence for advanced studies diplomas. So as I look to the next slide, I just want to highlight some additional areas of support and opposition that are included in our legislative priority package. And these are really just focused boiling down on a few key things, which is really a focus on opposing unfunded mandates. No matter how well intentioned, they place a burden on our schools and fall to us to either fund or to staff. And so our focus here is on prevention of those unfunded mandates. And secondly, an additional focus on continuing local control and local decision-making as well. And then lastly, which is to continue our support of our ongoing management of the statewide Virginia Star program. So looking ahead, where do we go from here? Once this is approved on your consent agenda next, at the next meeting, we will be sharing this with the county, with the Board of County Supervisors. We will then produce the 2020 legislative publication. And then, of course, following the election, which I know you all are well aware is coming, we will have a joint breakfast on November 26th with our state legislators and discuss this in ongoing one-on-one meetings, and of course, during our office visits in January. And throughout that, Mr. Council will continue his discussions with staff of all the state delegation, and we've had great working relationships with them. So we expect really great support, bipartisan support for many of our initiatives that we're putting forward this year.
Questions for Mr. Gilfoyle? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to highlight one issue, number eight, the whole proffer limitations issue. There's been key, and glad we're continuing to push on it. One question, and maybe it's somewhere else on our list. What about the V R S issues we've had with the school safety officers? Because I think the bills we were pushing for got buried in some committee last year. Is that still on our list?
Mr. Council, would you like to come to speak to that? I do know that we did, there was legislation passed related to that issue. Mr. Council can speak more to that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, were you referring to the proffer issues?
You're just talking specifically on V R S.
The V R S issues, we had school safety officers, we had some tanglements that were making it harder to hire school safety officers we were working on. I think one of the bills.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, school board members, I think we've had that as an initiative for about three years. And to tell you the truth, we have customized the statutory language in such a way that V R S does not oppose it any longer. It gets widespread support among the General Assembly, but the truth is, the chairman of House Appropriations detested, and we get down to just the chairman, and he will not let it get out of subcommittee. So that's been experienced three straight years.
Okay.
And his rationale, which I do not agree with, is that we're allowing those retired officers to take positions that otherwise would be available to newcomers into the marketplace. I don't agree with that, but that's the argument we hear every year.
Sure. Do we have this issue still in our legislative priorities?
It's not currently part of the package, as we mentioned, because we didn't feel it would be one that was worth continuing to highlight. But if we feel that's something that the board felt strongly needed to be added, we obviously, we obviously could do that.
I'd love to see it re-added, and the chairman of appropriations, there's a very tough reelection campaign going on right now.
Yes, I was going to say, as a result of redistricting, he may not be with us, so it may be worth taking another shot at this, yes.
Miss Jesse was next, and then we'll go to Mr. Trenum. Not every day we have Mr. Council here, so.
Number eight.
My pleasure.
Could you just review number eight for me? The previous legislation and how it limited the proffers and what we're looking for? Could you, in layman's terms, could you just review that for me? Thank you.
It's the proffers.
Yep, go ahead.
So this goes back to the change in the law where they remove the ability for localities to seek proffers from developers, and so that continues to be an issue in Richmond that has not been fully resolved. And so we continue to have a legislative priority in here on this issue. So we're looking for the localities to gain the ability to seek proffers again. I'm simplifying it as much, you know, I'm simplifying it downs significantly, but that's the bottom line.
But what are our chances of that happening?
Do you want to speak to that?
Our man in Richmond.
Well, yes, ma'am. Well, first of all, we don't even know what the General Assembly is going to look like until after November, or which party will control the two chambers. But there was a lot.
More blue slides.
That's right. There were a lot of concessions made by the home builders last year on proffers. They didn't get far enough to be acceptable, but they've shown a lot of movement on it. So I think that the trend is in the right direction. I will tell you that more of the work on the proffer issue is at the county level and by their representatives than it really is by me. But significant progress was made, and I think there's a good chance we could get at least half a loaf this next session.
Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't leave, Jim. So I wanted to follow on on Mr. Deutsch's comment about the school safety officers. I first had that conversation back in 2007. So we've been, I know we've been talking about that for a long time. Like you said, right now, we've got it down to one particular bottleneck. I agree, it may be, you want to kind of pick and choose what you put on the legislative priorities to actively pursue, but I think it would be, it would be very worthwhile to maybe put it in as a statement of support. That way, if somebody else comes back with it, we've already got that in the process and we're there. And like you said, elections, elections matter and elections change things. So if things do change, then we're ready for that opportunity. So that's what I would suggest.
Just one final comment on that. I was very optimistic last session that this was going to pass with all the new emphasis on school safety, but like you said, there's just one major hurdle between that and passage.
Any other questions? Listen, I appreciate this. So this is the first reading. I think we're going to vote on it the next time. So if anybody has any other priorities they'd like to bring up, please send them to Matt. And I have a couple of questions. You know, we've heard a lot about the electric vehicle initiative that the governor's rolling out with Dominion, and I know our folks have talked about that. And then there's also some activities for solar panels in schools. And there are some RFPs going out by Fairfax Loudon. And are, is there a movement down in Richmond to make it easier, Mr. Council, for schools to access and acquire the technologies needed to do those things outside of these sort of pilot programs that are going on? And can we, can we, is it a thought that maybe we can maybe be the ones to push for some legislative action to help us acquire technology?
I think we really could be ones to push for it. Like so many other things, the problem is money.
Yeah.
And of course, as you're aware, this is a re-benchmarking session for the next biennium. And if you look back, state per pupil funding is like 8% less than what it was approximately six or seven years ago. So we still just got a general uphill battle on getting funding back to where it should be. But if the question is to allow latitude to localities to do more, I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you guys very much. That was excellent presentation. Next, we'll move on to 1701 Proposed Sale of V P S A Bonds Fall 2019 Sale. Mr. Wallingford?
Dr. Latif, Dr. Waltz, and members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to top Matt Gilfoyle and share no slides with you. What I will share with you, however, is the item we're bringing for information this evening, and that is the coming V P S A sale for $124,510,000. This is an information item this evening, and we'll be back for approval at the next meeting.
Mr. Trenum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Just for clarification, because I, when I first saw this, I had to think for a minute. I know somebody, we've got, we've included, we've included bonds in there. Like, we've got $3 million of bonds for John Jenkins Elementary School. We just opened that school. So if you could kind of just kind of run through why we've got, we show bonds for some projects that appear to be complete.
Sure. So what we do in all of our sales for all of our schools is we stagger those. Okay, so for a high school, for example, that's, which is really the best example, it's a five-year sale. So we'll sell one year in advance, then during the years of construction, and typically, we may sell a year after. And so that's what you're seeing here with John D. Jenkins. It's just a timing issue.
Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. One other question. So there's a whole discussion right now about bond referendums in the county, and we're getting ready to approve bonds here. Can you just walk us through the difference in terms of bonds that we don't have to have public referendums on versus bonds that we just approve here?
So for school divisions in Virginia, and this is unique to Virginia, it's a Virginia law, the V P S A provides a vehicle through which school divisions, really counties, because school divisions don't issue debt, but through which localities, cities and counties can issue debt for schools without referendum. There are several other vehicles for selling debt. General obligation debt is the standard one that most people are familiar with. General obligation debt requires referenda, and so for the county, depending on the kind of issue that they're making, it may require referendum. We can do that as a school division as well, or the county can do it for us, I should say. We haven't done that, I think it's 1997. It's been years and years and years since we haven't used the V P S A mechanism to sell our own debt.
Mr. Wallingford, just for my own sake and maybe for the boards, when we sell 125 million, this goes up against our debt capacity? How does that work? Our debt limits?
So we've, or the county has set a debt limit of 10% of total revenues, and so when we go out and sell $124 million worth of bonds, we'll incur in roughly, it's about, it's about $1 million per 10. So we incur about $12 to $13 million in debt service every year for the next 20 years. So when you add that to the current debt service level we have, that has to be by requirement less than 10% of total revenues. And that's something that's actually set forth in financial guidelines that the county puts out for themselves, that they share with the rating agencies when they have those conversations.
Is that a 10% debt combined for the county and schools, or we have 10%, they have 10%?
So we look at it both ways. We actually separate it out and look at it as a school item only. The county does the calculation for the purpose of ratings, including both county and school revenue and county and school debt.
Okay.
The answer, the simple answer is we do it both ways.
And then last, I assume this is a good time to go out and sell bonds?
Over the past three, probably three years, we've seen the lowest rates that we've seen in some professionals' lifetimes. It's been great for selling.
And then another naive question. If this is a great time, is it reasonable to consider selling more without going above our debt capacity, or do we have any room for that? And can we accelerate projects?
Sure.
And this is a naive question. I mean, I'm not looking to.
Actually, it's a very good question.
Push, but yeah.
There are several constraints on what you can sell. One is the debt limit, the 10% I discussed. The other is the cash available to actually fund the payments. So we could go out and sell 200 or 300 million dollars in debt.
Yeah.
But you have to have the capacity to actually put the cash towards the service. Interest rates are a very important thing. Interest rates are a very important thing, and so the lower the rates are, the more interest there would be from somebody who has a lot of project work they might do to try and go grab debt before you see the cost going up over the next three to five years, which we'll probably see, almost certainly, costs will increase.
Mr. Trentum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up on your question about the 10%. Like Mr. Wallingford said, we look at that, we look at that each separated out. County looks at it as a combined level. There have been times since I've been on the board where, I think Patriot High School actually was delayed because there wasn't enough debt service between the two organizations to cover that, so we actually had to delay it a little bit. Flip side, there's been times when the county was, didn't have, wasn't taking up the debt, and we went and sucked out part of their portion. So, it works both ways.
And just to be clear, again, another naive question, but that limit is set so to maintain our AAA bond rating?
That's one of the reasons. It's also a good financial management thing to do, but as it maintains ratings.
Okay. Pending any further questions, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go to superintendent's time. Dr. Waltz. Oh, no, hold on. I'm sorry. Superintendent, yes, superintendent's time. Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Waltz. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. 1801.
1801.
Oh, okay. So, I'm sorry. So, yeah.
I move that to Prince William County School Board to approve the appointment of Jamie Van Echo to represent superintendent on Special Education Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
I will actually second that motion. I'm allowed to do that? Am I allowed to do that, Ms. McGowan? Okay. Do we have any discussion on Ms. Van Echo? Okay, please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
She's still here? Okay. All right. Next, we'll go to superintendent's time. Dr. Waltz.
And the latest appointee is in the back. Would you like to stand? Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. So, tonight is a two-part presentation. First, the normal, great things that are going on in the school division, but I also do a back-to-school report at this meeting every year. So, I hope everyone had a fun, restful, and relaxing summer break with families and friends. Although it does slow down a little during the summer, we still had a lot of special events, activities, and celebrations. I had the pleasure of attending the English Learner Summer High School Program Ceremony of Completion, followed by the Adult Education and Summer School Graduation. Both ceremonies celebrated and recognized the many students overcoming a number of challenges to reach their goals. I'm proud of each one of these students and wish them the best in the future. I was also excited to receive an invitation to the 29th Annual Manassas African-American Heritage Festival coordinated by retirement, coordinated by retired PWCS Principal Brenda Lewis, who, by the way, was a superstar principal, school of excellence. Many accolades follow her great reputation. So, she chairs this event, and the festival featured delicious food, outstanding entertainment, and a classic car show. I was actually there for about five hours, visited with many of our students and their parents, elected officials, many different fraternities, sororities, and other community organizations who provide school supplies and other valuable support to our schools, including mentoring. One of the greatest highlights of the past few weeks was the ribbon-cutting and dedication ceremony of the John D. Jenkins Elementary School. Over 300 people attended the event, which not only celebrated the opening of a new school, but we also dedicated the storeroom to Ernestine Jenkins. It was truly one of the most meaningful events in my educational career and a milestone for PWCS. This morning, I had the pleasure of welcoming Virginia's First Lady, Pamela Northam, to Prince William County Schools. The First Lady visited two schools during her back-to-school tour. Students at Fitzgerald Elementary impressed the First Lady while teaching her how to fly a drone. She actually did it. At Washington Reed, the First Lady interacted with our preschool students before reading them a book about a good bee. We appreciate her visit and her advocacy for early childhood education. Now, as been my tradition, at the first school board meeting, I will present the top 10 reasons to be excited for the start of a new school year. Number 10, as we highlighted earlier this evening, during Positively PWCS, we have numerous new facilities, renovations, and additions to celebrate. I also want to highlight the outstanding custodial and facility staff who cleaned and prepared 11 million square footage of facilities for day one, and our schools look great. I've already meant almost 20. Number 9, transportation. Our transportation staff worked incredibly hard all summer to make day one as smooth as I have seen in years. Day one had an eligible ridership of 73,000-plus students with more than 699 buses on the road driving 3,750 routes, covering over 80,000 miles a day. And through great teamwork between our human resources and transportation staff, we have 697 drivers, 180 bus attendants, 135 substitutes, and another 19 drivers who are currently in training. So, if you're interested in driving a bus, we have a job for you. Number 8, technology improvements. We have a number of technology improvements that were done this summer. First, I'm excited to announce we refreshed more than 6,500 computer devices in our schools. And by this fall, every classroom in our school system, including every trailer, will have an interactive whiteboard. We also upgraded every school to a voice-over IP phone network, and I even heard a rumor today that one of the people influential in that conversion over the years said that he wasn't going to retire until every single IP phone network was completed, so I hope he won't retire, but the work is done. Our HR and IT team launched electronic contracts for all staff and a new online performance management system. And perhaps something I am most excited about as a parent, we launched credit card acceptance for some fees and programs, including planetarium tickets. We have already received over $100,000 in fees through credit cards, and the ability to use credit cards for other fees will be coming throughout this school year. Number 7, the Hub. One of the largest projects this summer was the launch of the Hub. This launch involved every teacher, school administrator, many of our central office departments, and our students. The Hub is our new cloud-based student information system, and it will serve as the go-to source for parents, student, teachers, and administrators for all kinds of information, including schedules, grades, attendance, bus schedules, and messaging. To prepare the system, our IT department had to move 20 years of student data for more than 280,000 students, involving 21 million records of data. Our Directors of Counseling worked throughout the summer using the Hub to ensure every student was scheduled. The Hub had more than 500,000 logins during its first week, and over 50,000 emails have been sent through the Hub by teachers to students and parents. Stay tuned, because it is just the beginning of future improvements enabled by the Hub. Number 6, food services. Children learn best when they are well-nourished and ready to learn. Our award-winning food services team, on one day, day one, served almost 10,000 breakfasts and 50,000 lunches. This takes a well-run logistics operation to ensure the shelves are stocked each morning, and an army of food services staff who are up well before the sun to freshly prepare these meals for our students each and every day. Number 5, mental health and well-being support. As we announced earlier this summer, I was pleased to add 53 additional school counselors, as well as additional psychologists and social workers, and to have a full-time nurse at every school. We're also working to launch a new anonymous reporting app later this school year that will allow parents, students, and staff to submit secure and anonymous safety concerns to help identify and intervene upon at-risk individuals before they hurt themselves or others. Number 4, our community. We are starting this year with the best school budget in a decade. This is thanks to the unanimous support of the school board and the Board of County Supervisors, with the assistance of our state delegation in securing additional funding from Richmond. This enabled us to provide our teachers and staff with a 4.8% pay raise effective at the start of the school year. Additionally, we had no increase in our health insurance benefits, so a double bonus there. Additionally, our community continued to support our students through their generous support of our Spark Education Foundation, including raising over $100,000 through the 26th Annual T.O.F. for Education Golf Classic at Old Hickory Golf Club. As a reminder to our teachers, the first submission deadline for this year's innovative grants is September 15, and the application can be found on the Spark website. Number 3, our parents and guardians. We could not be the world-class school division. We are without our parents and guardians. I want to personally thank them for what they do each and every day for our schools and their children. This includes our PTO and PTAs, our booster parents, and our watchdogs, and other parent and guardian volunteers. The engagement of parents in our schools is crucial, and thank you for your partnership. Number 2, our teachers and administrators. We have the greatest teachers and administrators, and this summer, our Human Resources Department, working with our principals and other leaders, hired 1,049 new staff, including 882 new teachers and administrators. At Connect, I had the pleasure of speaking with our new teachers, some of whom are experienced teachers but new to PWCS, and some are new to both teaching and our school division. And I was truly impressed by their enthusiasm and positive attitude. I also know we have a returning staff that is world-class, that is demonstrated through the double-digit increases on the SOL achieved last school year by our English learners and our special education students. And lastly, number 1 clearly has to be our students. At over 91,600 strong, this is the largest student body in Prince William County history, the strength of our division lies in our incredible diversity, our students from pre-K through our adult learners. Every day, I engage with our students, and my energy is restored, and my hope for our future is reaffirmed. I want to thank our students for their incredible work ethic, their kindness, and their positive attitudes. They are what make PWCS truly world-class. We have so much to celebrate. On day one, I want to thank everyone for the outstanding and positive partnership it took to get things off to an incredible opening day and opening week. I will end my remarks this evening with a short video recapping the first day of school. Let's take a look.
Here on Good Morning Washington, live in Manassas, Virginia, in Prince William County at Stonewall Jackson High School.
Happy birthday of school!
It's 12:00. I missed you.
I'm gonna have fun today!
Excellent. We did have a wonderful rollout to the first day and first week of school. Next, we'll move on to board matters. We're going to move to 1901, adoption of Policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. I'm going to ask Ms. McGowan to give us the summary of this policy change.
Good evening, members of the school board. Dr. Waltz. Policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication, came about because we had some isolated incidents over the past couple of years in which board members were unable to attend board meetings either due to illness or work conflicts. And the question was asked whether or not they could participate in the meeting remotely by electronic means. And the answer lies in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, particularly the open meetings provisions, which says that in certain limited circumstances, board members can participate remotely, provided that they have adopted a policy that incorporates a number of criteria that are laid out in the FOIA statute in play. So, I canvassed some other jurisdictions and contacted the Virginia FOIA Council and drafted this proposed policy at Dr. Latif's request for the board's consideration. So, basically, the Virginia statute dictates the contents of the policy. So, 90% of what you have in front of you is lifted verbatim from the statute. The high points of it are that if you have this policy and it's adopted by the board, it allows remote participation by board members in very limited circumstances. It allows you to participate remotely for a medical disability or for personal reasons, provided that those personal reasons are articulated and contained in the record, and provided that any single board member can only do that twice a year. In addition, it requires that the person participating from a remote location have their voice and/or image available to those of you who are assembled here in a physical Another criteria of the policy is it must be applied uniformly to all members of the school board, regardless of who the member is or regardless of what the issues are on the agenda for a particular meeting. The yellow highlighting in the attachment are additions that were added after I received input from board members, primarily Mr. Deutsch and Ms. Williams, and some helpful suggestions, which I then researched further. The process, the one piece of the policy that the FOIA does not dictate is the requirement that the board have an approval process, a process that, by which these requests by certain members can be approved or disapproved. So, in order to draft that, I contacted the FOIA Council and used the process that the Virginia FOIA Council itself uses, subject to some additional modifications suggested by board members. So, that process, under this process, the proposed approval process, a board member who wants to participate remotely would contact the chairman, or in his absence, the vice-chairman, and make the request no later than 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Then, the chairman/vice-chairman would then contact other members of the school board to let them know that the request has been made, and the chairman would then approve the request, provided that it met all of the criteria of the policy. And then, at the beginning of the meeting, it would be announced to the public that the board member was either going to participate remotely or that the request to participate remotely had been denied. If any board member wanted to challenge that decision, the first item on the agenda that evening would be a vote on the approval or disapproval. So, that's the approval process is incorporated in here. There are some other provisions that are also driven by statute. One is the requirement that the clerk records certain things in the minutes when the board member is participating remotely, what location they're, where they're participating from, and the reasons for the remote participation. And finally, there's a section, again, lifted from the statute, dealing with participation by all members of the board from remote locations in the event that the governor declares a state of emergency. And those provisions are in there in that remote situation. So, that's kind of a summary of the policy, if anybody has any questions.
So, just for the board members' understanding, Lori Williams asked us to look into this over the summer, and we've come up with this as Division Counsel, Ms. McGowan, has researched, canvassed, and looked at. Just to, you know, as with the 100 rules, we're trying to modernize and bring up-to-date things we do. It is 2019. In case necessity requires someone to participate by remote location, we should have a policy for that. You know, I've actually been very impressed with our board and their attendance in the 16 months I've been here. It's been, I mean, outstanding. And so, I don't anticipate this to be used very often, except other than emergency situations outlined by medical or disability and those kinds of things. Questions, concerns, thoughts? Ms. Jessie.
First of all, I think it's very comprehensive, and I appreciate your work. You always do fabulous work. I had a question...
Are you talking about me, or are you talking about Ms. McGowan? Are you talking about me, or are you talking about Ms. McGowan?
Both. Both? How about that? But she's so thorough. I had a question on-
He didn't really have anything to do with it.
True. Zero.
The technical support, so each one of us would get that, the additional technical support in our private offices that we have in our homes? Is that how that's going to work?
Well, I think I'd have to let Mr. Guilfoyle answer that call. I know that it contemplates participation by phone.
Okay.
But we also understand, have the capability of, may have the capability of allowing video participation, where the requirement is only that your voice be available to the assemblage here. But I think we also may have that capability. Am I correct in understanding-
So we may have a choice of whether or not we want to do it by phone or by image?
Or phone and image.
Phone and image. I wasn't sure about the quorum. In reading it, it said that there needed to be a quorum. Would the person in the remote location be considered part of the quorum, or would there have to be a quorum present on the board before this could take place?
There has to be a quorum of board members physically present in the meeting place.
In the meeting.
In the meeting.
So that person would not be. And the other question I had is that by four o'clock, that's, I'm not sure that's a lot of time, but I can understand how that could happen if there's an emergency. The chairman and the vice-chairman would have to determine whether or not you could actually access remotely. Do you think that's enough time for them to determine whether or not you have a viable reason for doing a remote?
Well, I think that, I'm trying to remember who suggested the four o'clock. Originally, I think the policy said 24 hours, and then there was some concern that people could, as you point out, an emergency could come up at the last minute. That would justify remote participation, so it was changed to four. But that's a number that the board could certainly change.
And finally, it says reason for denial. In doing your research, did you come across some of the reasons that this would be denied? What types of reason would you deny not allowing a person to?
The grounds for denial has to be based upon the fact that the request doesn't meet the criteria in the statute, which are also in your policy. In other words, there, for example, someone could try to use the personal excuse more than twice, and that would have to be denied, because the policy says you can only use personal reasons on two occasions during a year. And if, or if the board member wasn't able to articulate a medical condition or disability, et cetera. But I think generally, the jurisdictions that I've spoken to, generally, the chairman approves that this is a fairly routine thing, that unusual, that it's not frequent, but it's a fairly routine thing for the chairman to make the approval. And here, we've built in this extra criteria that if someone disagrees with the approval, it can still be challenged by the board as a whole.
Thank you.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a very new concept, and I think it's, I think it's very critical for people to be here at meetings in order, as part of being board members, both interaction with the public, hearing from the public, interaction with staff, interaction with other board members. I think physical attendance is key, and so I think this would definitely be a significant change. At minimum, I think the changes in terms of a state of emergency situation are a critical, just emergency preparation type thing, and that makes a lot of sense. The other part I'm still not sure about, but I've got a few things I think we need to at least work out logistically before we were to approve something like this. I think we need a mechanism for some sort of a queue in order for people to speak, just so there's agreed-upon protocols for how somebody who isn't here gets in that queue and is able to know they're going to be able to speak, speak in equal amount of time, et cetera. I still think that a video presentation of the person is critical for a couple of reasons. I think they've got to be able to see via video what's going on at the meeting, whether it's presentation staff are giving, the staff members themselves giving. Just, there's a lot of visuals that end up coming into a meeting, and I think that video dynamic is critical. But I also think that, you know, board meetings can go three, four, maybe six hours, and from a pure logistics perspective, understanding whether a person is still there throughout the meeting is key. And so being able to see, okay, that person's still here, because theoretically, if they're only in by audio, they could mute their phone, disappear, who knows what. And I'm also still concerned about what checks we have in case of a health situation, to make sure that it's the board member themselves casting the votes, and that they aren't in a health situation where somebody else is with them in casting votes. And so I think some of those all need to be worked out, but then I think the board still needs to think through the philosophical question of, do we really want people who aren't here actually attending and making those decisions where they're not going to be involved in the same way that other board members are? Just kind of some initial thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. That was, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Trentum.
Ms. McGowan, thank you. I do have one question specifically, and it's real short, I think it is. I didn't see any differences between open session and closed session. Are we contemplating differences for that, from that issue? Are we treating them both the same?
We have included, the policy does allow for closed-meeting participation. We have included at the bottom of page one, and you'll see the yellow highlighting, that participation in a closed meeting is allowed only when the member is in a location where other persons are not present, and that does not allow for discussion of the board to be overheard or recorded in any form. Which then takes us to Mr. Deutsch's point. How do we, how do we logistically carry these out? That might be something that needs to be worked through with communications on what our capabilities are.
I'll just weigh in real quick on this specific thing, and then Ms. Satterwhite will go. At the state agency level, or the higher education universities at UVA, if someone participates remotely, it has to be noticed publicly, and the spot from which they're participating is from has to be open to the press and the public. So you cannot participate unless you are in a place where you're going to invite the public and the press in to make sure you're there, participating remotely. So that's just a thought. I know that doesn't apply to localities, we discussed this, but that sort of addresses the Mr. Deutsch thing. If I were to, you know, participate remotely in a meeting, I do it in a way that is public noticed, and the press can certainly come and listen to me participate on the phone. But Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can see that if someone's recovering from a surgery and they're in their home, they might not want to have people in their home. But I understand the purpose behind that. I think if that were exemption number two, to be eligibility, I think for personal matter, okay, say someone's out of town, how would that enable press and citizens to be able to be there? So I've got a lot of concerns with this, and Ms. McGowan, I do appreciate you putting this together. So this was brought forward to the board. Our school board's getting a raise in January of 2020. There were three meetings that were cut from the schedule for this school year, and now we're looking at the ability to attend two meetings remotely and not attend in person. And I've got a problem with that. Less work for more pay, that's not how public sector works, or how private sector works. And maybe it does in public, but it doesn't in private sector. So I'm concerned about that. I have a huge problem with closed session being able to be attended remotely. There's a major security issue. And Ms. McGowan, actually, it's not on here for, or recorded in any form, as far as that bottom section. So I think that would need to be added, or at least clarified in that section. You know, you're either in closed session or you're not. If you're not in closed session, then get a briefing from Ms. McGowan afterwards on what occurred. I think closed session needs to be restricted to the walls of the boardroom for a reason. And so that's something that's a no-go for me. I'm completely supportive of the temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition. In the one meeting I missed when I had my total knee surgery, minutes from a meeting were legally removed. So I can see why it would be advantageous to a board member to be able to attend when they're out for a medical event or emergency. That would have definitely helped in my situation, because it would have changed a vote. And so I know that's a good reason for having this. But as far as personal matters, I know things come up. I know there's some reasons that would fit in here and work and things like that. But we are made aware of the board meetings in advance. We know when the board meetings are. When it comes to different committee meetings, I don't think we need to have this for different committee meetings. In my opinion, this should be strictly for regular school board meetings, and only for the temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition. I am not comfortable with this in any other way. I do appreciate, Ms. McGowan, thank you very, very much for working with the FOIA Council on this, because transparency with our public and making information to our public is key. Also, I really do like the, I will add to what I like, the participation during a state of emergency, because we haven't spelled out anything like that. We've had snowmagedons before. So I can, that definitely makes sense, and I'm glad that under state law, under state code, we can actually do that now. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Any further comments? Anybody? Okay. Great. Thanks, Ms. McGowan. Mr. Deutsch.
Sorry. What's the process where we're going to see some of these logistical questions that we raised addressed before we come back for a second reading?
Say that again, please.
I said, what's the process where we're going to see some of the logistical questions that we raised addressed before this comes back for a second reading?
The same process that we always have, and that's whatever concerns you have, if you'd like to amend the policy after the first reading, you can certainly email them to Ms. McGowan. You can offer them as an amendment at the next meeting, if you don't see them in there. You have the option to email all board members with your concerns. You have any number of wonderful options at your disposal to work out how we'll discuss this in the future. And we don't have to vote on this the next time, and we can bring it up the next time, and we can push it off, just like we did with much of the Hundred Series. You know, we didn't make that decision right after the first reading on some of the more controversial or concerning issues. If we're going to make some of these changes, we'd like to get it right, and I think each of you have brought up really good points, some that I didn't even think about. And so as we look at this, you know, we'll put together something that if we can all agree on, that would be fantastic, and if we can't all agree on it, then this won't pass. But it's the normal process, Mr. Deutsch.
Well, sure, some of these are the logistical things and not things that would go into policy, so there's a difference in the normal process here.
And please email those logistical concerns and address them, you know, as part of the policy. And if, for example, your one concern may be, is our technology currently up to handling a remote access to a meeting? That's a real legitimate concern. If we don't have the technology to do this, then this doesn't fly. So, I mean, that's a logistical concern. If the issue is you have a concern about the queue by which someone's going to participate in, I think that needs to go in the policy.
Well, it's a technical thing, just in terms of board matters and, or how board docs work, so maybe we can get like a tech presentation to go along to kind of address something, just so we're all aware of this in advance.
Please put all your questions and concerns in an email, and we'll be happy to address them over the course of the next couple of weeks or forward. Next, we'll move to Adoption of Policy 601, Standards of Instructional Programs. First reading, Ms. Goss.
Good evening, Chairman Latif.
Good evening, Ms. Goss.
School board members and Dr. Walts, tonight, we are proposing a new policy, Policy 601, which would specify that the Prince William County Public Schools instructional standards are consistent with the Virginia standards of accreditation and quality, the standards of advanced ed, and the curriculum of Prince William County Public Schools. This new policy ensures that the school division is in compliance with the Constitution of Virginia, as well as Virginia Code.
Mr. Trentum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Goss. I have one question. So this is a new policy, so, and maybe it's been, but how is it that we don't have a policy that says our instructional standards are going to follow the Virginia standards of accreditation and quality and stuff like that? How could we not have had that?
Well, we had, as we are reviewing all of the regulations and policies, we've found some places where we had regulations that weren't attached to a policy, and we found some in this case, and we took the liberty of making sure that we had a policy that aligned with it.
I appreciate that. I'm just sending you a warning. This is our business. How could we have not had a policy that covered that? That's all. Thank you.
Well, you know, if I may speak freely, Mr. Trentum, who is our longest-serving-
Oh, I didn't notice it for 12 years.
-member, I may deem you the historian of the school board. You may better be able to answer that than most of us.
I just missed it for 12 years.
You missed it? Well, we're going to correct it. Correct, Ms. Goss?
Absolutely. That's where we need to work.
Okay. Any further questions? Excellent. Next, we'll go to the Adoption of 600. Any other questions? Ms. Satterwhite, anybody? Nobody? Okay. Adoption of Policy 604, Instructional Supervision.
Yes, good evening again.
Good evening.
And tonight, we are proposing a new policy, Policy 604, which is focused on instructional supervision and feedback that ensures continuous improvement of student learning and achievement. This new policy states that the superintendent's responsible for establishing a system of supervision and evaluation of instructional staff for this purpose, and it will ensure that our school division is in compliance with the Virginia Code.
Oh, Mr. Trentum.
Thank you. I do have, and it's a real question, actually, this time. But, so when it says responsible establishment of system of supervision and evaluation of instructional staff, so does that just cover teachers and teaching assistants? Does that cover our administrators that are in instructional positions, or how does that?
It includes all of those, really. So it would also include other certified staff as well, like our counselors, professional counselors.
Like our associate superintendent.
Absolutely, sir.
Wonderful.
Mr. Deutsch.
Okay.
All right. Since we almost had the same question with the same answer, I pulled up the 600 Series on rule on our policies. What's behind the numbering? Because we have a Policy 600, a 602, a 610, 622, 630. Do we, are we intending to fill in all of these gaps, or what's behind this numbering system we've got going?
So I wish I could explain the numbering exactly, but we have, like you said, a few gaps. They do fall within those categories that you see listed online under instruction or other places across the division. What we're really trying to do is make sure that we have policies connected to all of our regulations, and vice versa.
Ms. Jessie.
I think, I've been around for a while, so, and there are people in this room who remember the big green notebooks.
Yes.
Yes.
I remember those, Ms. Jessie.
There was a room, you had to designate a room for the policies. But this policy is, would you say to provide, to promote continuous improvement of learning and achievement? Does that mean that you're going to develop some specific strategies for accountability for learning? Does that, is that what this policy means?
So the policy really is connected to that attached regulation that you see there, that 604-1. And so those pieces around continuous improvement, we already have many elements already in place. This is just making sure that we have a policy that connects to that one regulation.
Yeah. But I haven't read that one regulation, and that one regulation, help me with that. Does that-
That's really around the professional performance process that we have in place.
Yeah, right. Okay, yes. And so the accountability for student learning is a part of that?
Absolutely. It's a part of our professional performance process.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Deutsch. Another question on the Dewey Decimal System?
Correct. All right. I'm, and maybe I'm going to have to, this now has me sparked to figure out more about how we do our policies and regulations, but I looked up our regulations. We have a number of regulations that have no policy that go with them, and then Policy, our Regulation 604 goes to Policy 571. How are, I thought our regulations stem directly from our policies.
So they do, but you're correct, we have found some places. Again, a lot of this predates some of us in our positions, so I would just say that we are doing everything possible to correct any of those places that you have seen in which- you have seen in which we would have a policy without a regulation, or where we would have a regulation not connected to a policy.
Okay, next, we'll, any, any further questions? Okay, we're going to move next to 1904, revision of policy 702. We're in the 700 area now. Teacher removal of students from class. First reading, Ms. Heebner.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, Dr. Walts. I'm pleased to bring forward for first reading the revision of policy 702, teacher removal of students from class. This policy, this policy has been updated to include revisions to ensure compliance and legal reference to state code. The updated policy also includes a responsibility statement regarding the implementation and monitoring of this policy, as well as outlining the continuation of educational services for students.
Any questions? Mr. Wilk.
I do. Hi. Question. I'm curious what the impetus or the rationale was for some of these. For example, the one about the principal shall provide an education unless the child is expelled. Were we having incidents where kids were just being sent out in the hall daily and roaming? Like, no, I'm being, I'm being serious. Like, like, I guess the accountability piece, like, did that have to be stated here or in this incident? Like, I guess I'll turn to you on that.
So we just want to create clarity that we would, we would expect supervision and continuation of education. It does also align with the guidance we're receiving from VDOE.
The other one, thank you, with the management of the student. So in the evaluation of a teacher, with a principal, if something does not meet a standard, not a standard, one of the criterias, I guess, for the evaluation, wasn't it incumbent on the principal to like, if, let's just say, management was an issue, to probably provide or offer professional development? Again, is this just laying?
That's inferred, and here we are spelling it out very clearly.
Okay, very good. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, on the flip side of this, what are we doing to support teachers as they implement these, this policy? Because I think a lot of teachers get a lot of pressure and blowback as we try to enforce classroom management at times. And so what are we doing on that front?
So I, I don't want to speak in Ms. Goss's area, but I will tell you that we have some amazing things going on with supporting classroom management. I know last year, we had a conference where we had 70 teachers attend in the fall on conscious classroom, where we have identified just areas to emphasize and focus best practices. I know at the beginning of this year, we've also provided professional development, but this is a more targeted approach. We also have offerings in our ERO catalog where we specifically offer strategies and support. We have people that go, also go into classroom behavior specialists that can target individual students as needed or classrooms.
Awesome. Yeah, whatever we can do to make sure teachers know we have their backs as they keep their classrooms a place for education and making that thrive would be awesome.
Excellent.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Jesse.
I, I like the last statement, any teachers whose evaluation indicate deficiencies in management, that there's going to be some support for them. Because sometimes you find that this is a challenge for teachers. There are good teachers, but managing a classroom is a challenge. So we have provisions for that, to support teachers who really just need some classroom management training.
We do. We, in the past, we've done that and we'll continue to work to meet those needs. I know last year was very successful. Personally, I went in to observe some of the participants before and after, and there was marked improvement. So there's, we've recognized that there is a need to support and that we have a lot of different things in place.
Yeah. Sometimes they just need a change of grade levels. Sometimes they're just working with the, the, a group of kids that they're better with little, smaller kids or whatever. But I, I do like having that piece in there. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to emphasize, looking at this policy and looking at the bottom date, this was originally adopted in March 25th, on March 25th, 1998. There have been a lot of legal changes since this was updated. So I, I appreciate the update. I appreciate how things are so clearly spelled out because I know there are situations where our hands are tied with some of the new state code. And so thank you for bringing this forward, and I'll be looking at it again, too, before next meeting. Thank you.
I think Ms. Satterwhite brings up an excellent point. As with the 100 series and as with these, we don't have, unless I missed it, an office of compliance specifically. So we expect, you know, divisions, staff, associate superintendents, folks working within this to sort of help us comply and make sure we're up to date on our policies. So, all joking aside, Mr. Trenum, I think, you know, some of these things haven't been looked at in a long time, and I think to keep in compliance, it, it's a full-time job. And many times we, you know, it's just, there's a lot here. And as we do with the 100 series, I think it's a, it's a good reform movement that we're continuing to do throughout the, the year. So I appreciate it and thank you very much. We'll go to the next policy revision, and that'll be 777, threat assessment procedures. Ms. Heebner.
Okay, policy 777, threat assessment procedures, has been updated to include language to clarify processes and to reflect updated procedures to ensure compliance with Virginia State Code and consistency with the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety.
Questions? Ms. Ralston.
I'll come on. So it, basically what we've done is clarified that we are following the guidelines that are put forth from Virginia Code. We've expanded it beyond students to include any individual that may threaten in a school setting, where previously it was, it was very narrow and only included students. So we've expanded that. We've also talked about, added some language to make sure that there's a reference to the regulation and following the procedures that are outlined in the regulation now in the policy. And we've clarified that self-harm is not investigated through the threat assessment process, but we have a different approach to that and a lot of different avenues for making sure that self-harm is included in the budget. Self-harm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you. I think that's a very important point on self-harm, and thank you for updating that. I think that's, that's critical. Just a note, and in talking to schools, apparently this has to be reiterated, but playing with guns in a threatening way is not good. Students shouldn't do it. Students should think very carefully about doing it. And please don't make excuses.
Noted.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Question, uh, Mr. Chairman. It's been long. Getting back in the group.
Only six more meetings.
Oh, not nearly. I do have a question, now that you brought it up, as far as individuals as opposed to students. What are we, what are we envisioning with individuals? Are we talking about individuals who are staff members? People walking down the street in front of the school? I mean, I'm just curious as to what that individuals term is supposed to encompass.
It could apply to a staff member in a building. It could imply an individual who is in the building, in the school setting. So it's just beyond, before it previously was only specifically related to students, but recognizing that there is other opportunity for threat.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. As with all, again, you know, this is the first reading, please get your questions, concerns into staff over the next week, as we take these up in either consent agenda next time or for further discussion. Next, we'll move to 19.06, which is the appointment of the school board members to the joint board for the governor's school. Just to let the public know, the governor's school that we share with Manassas City, Manassas Park, has a governing body. Two representatives from each of the school districts that participate are appointed by each school board, and they're typically, they are school board members of each district. And so at this time, I will accept nominations for our appointees to represent the Prince William County School Board on the Governor's School at Innovation Parks Board of Directors. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that the Prince William County School Board appoint my colleagues, Ms. Allison Satterwhite, Ms. Lori Williams, to serve on the Governor's School Joint Board for a two-year term, and appoint Dr. Barbara Latif as the alternate member of this group.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trenum. Mr. Trenum seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Okay. All right. Next, we will move into, are you going to read the vote? I'm sorry.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Okay. Move to board matters. We'll start on Mr. Deutsch's side today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Summer is always an exciting time, and we had a number of great things. Of course, we wrapped up graduation season. We had summer school graduation, really exciting to see students moving forward. We also had, I, I just, a shout out to Alice Saroshi, and also to Wayne Mallard for all his work last year. I think we had a big improvement on our bus situation this year over last year, so thank you there. Got to visit Rosa Parks and Kyle Wilson Elementary Schools yesterday. We just had American Heart Association group in earlier, and while I was touring Rosa Parks, principal showed me a student who had benefited greatly from the support of the American Heart Association, was very active in, in school as a student, and was only there because of that group, and it was really exciting. Hilton, we're, we're beginning a major renovation, doing that planning work, but we just got some brand-new lights at the football stadium, and that is exciting and a lot of fun. Also, and I don't know if she's still here, but we also brought on, oh, there she is, we brought on a new ombudsman for the, at the end of the summer. I think we're going to be hearing from her at the next school board meeting, but really excited to have her and the work that she's going to do in the school division. So a lot, a lot of good things happening. Last school board meeting, we finished with some, some excitement. We brought into the, the main school board meeting an extensive discussion about the superintendent's contract that was brought into a very, a very public manner in terms of pressuring, pressuring the board, and that's interesting. But over the summer, I, I think communication is critical, both to the public, also to the board, and especially when it comes to communication and transparency. I, I just want to raise two issues that show some of the issues that we've had over the summer on that front. And honestly, you know, things happen. That's, things are going to happen. But as board members, we should be hearing about them from staff before we're hearing about them from other places. And one of those issues is what we alluded to earlier with Colgan Pool. As the school board member for the Colgan Supervisor District, to get a report or a call from a reporter asking about a half a million dollar repair expenditure and a four-month, a four-week shutdown at Colgan Pool, without hearing about it from staff first, is concerning and alarming. And that should be something that, as board members, we should hear about first. We also had the entire situation with the opening of a brand-new school. And while a lot of the details are going to be worked out through appropriate means, we had serious issues, and we didn't hear anything about the severity of those issues for days. It took myself reaching out to county and our staff before we even got the real details and heard what was really happening. And so I think we've got to be more upfront with the school board and with the public about what's going on if we're going to be accountable and transparent. I think that's key.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Jesse.
I come with slides. So, first, the John Jenkins Elementary. I, I just want to congratulate the principals, the students who were in the choir. And I also want to congratulate, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, Mr. Al Karyoshi?
Sure.
Oh, sure. I met with him on Tuesday to talk about some of the, the concerns that they had, and I was pleased with what you had to tell me. And I cannot go into detail, but I have been in the school system for a very long time, and I know that it's very challenging. I just love to support staff because I think you guys do a tremendous job. And, you know, I know I gave you guys a hard time about the turf field, but when I, when I have a concern, you're going to hear it, you're going to hear it directly from me. And I do appreciate everything that you've done on that. I would like to move to the next set of slides that I have. This is the chow wagon, and the chow wagon, this is an initiative that started with Mr. Adam Russo and Dr. Vanessa Gaddis and Joyce Jr., the person's name, Joyce Jr. These two ladies decide to feed students, and it was not, you know, as we get into the next item that I have, is whether or not a board member cares about people in, outside of her district. When they came to me with this idea, and I took it to Adam, we worked out, worked it out, and it was determined that the best schools for this would be Dumfries and also that Woodbridge District and Dale City. And so I, I wanted to report that from June 17th, I think there's some other slides you can show. They were at the firehouse down in Dumfries, and they served 9,000 meals, these two ladies, in these three locations, at the Fire and Rescue Station, number three, the Hilton Boys and Girls Club, and Competitive Edge. They received, they were listed in the newspaper, there were several articles, including, and visitors included the Lieutenant Governor, Justin Fairfax, Senator McPike, Daryl, Derek Wood, the mayor of Dumfries, and Jared Conley. I'd like to see the, I think Food Services did several, had several projects this summer, so I'd like to have it considered for positively PLC. I don't think there's a, is there another slide that I have for that? This, these are the firefighters, and they were just very, very supportive. The day I was there, they were just helping as much as they could. Initially, we didn't have as much turnout in Dumfries, but we really did, it did improve. Next set of slides. I want to talk a little bit about the Aviation Maintenance Program with Marion Root, Marion Cohen. There's been a miscommunication on that because some board members said they are confused. So I want to just clear up the confusion. Marion Cohen is the executive director of the Aviation Institute of Maintenance. I've known her for quite some time. She introduced me to this concept, and I have been to that facility over the last three years, several, I've made several visits. In fact, I think the next slide will show the ribbon-cutting ceremony where they, where they have their own jet on that, at that facility. And they train, there's a program for young men, young women and men at the high school level to become trained aviation mechanics. And I have been working for three years with her to get this program in Prince William, but we had some transportation problems. And so on August 5th, let's see, let's see the next slide, please. There are slides where the, we had the Secretary of Education come in, next slide. Our delegate was there, and this is us in the boardroom as we planned. And on August 5th, she came up with a plan for Woodbridge High School. Now, there was some confusion because people thought that, I received all these emails about the five-year plan. The plan that we have for Woodbridge High School is an after-school plan. Woodbridge High School is not in the five-year plan until 2023. Stonewall Jackson is in next year. So I want to make sure that this was cleared because there's a newspaper article, and it says that I don't like Stonewall Jackson. And, and it looks very authentic because there's a crazy picture of me. And it looks like one of those things on the tabloids where Lily Jessie hates Stonewall Jackson. I don't. I just felt that Woodbridge High School does not have an aviation program. They were willing to send the, the people there to that school and give them a program. They won't have a program until 2023. It's an after-school program and does not interfere with the five-year plan. And another decision has been made. I am not pleased with that decision, and I, I have supported, like, the chow program, several programs for other schools in this county to include Stonewall Jackson and the Martin Luther King Program. Norman Jones is one of those kids. So at the end of the day, I know the decision has been made, but I would like for the superintendent and staff to still consider. and staff to still consider Woodbridge High School for a four-day program, because they won't have any program until 2023, and they need four days in order for these kids to get their information and be ready for certification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I'll remind the board members, we do have a timer. We try to keep them comments at three minutes. Mr. Deutsch, I owe you time. What we'll do is this time, if folks have to go longer, because it's the summer we're reporting on, feel free, but when we come to next week's meeting, let's try to stick to the time, if possible. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you.
I'll give Mr. Deutsch more time next time. My apologies.
He takes some time.
Ms. Ralston, you're allowed to read there.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome back to school, students, parents, teachers, and staff. I hope you had a wonderful summer and are ready for a new school year. Thank you to business partner, Muriel Gar, Senior Vice President of Sun Trust Bank, for the 250 backpacks filled with supplies for the students of Hampton Middle School. Thanks to the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, Dr. George Hampton, and Principal Mitchell for helping to hand out the backpacks to students. It was a great day. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new John D. Jenkins Elementary School. Mr. Jenkins was a good friend of mine, and I am sure he would have been pleased. Last week, I popped into, this week, I'm sorry. This week, I popped into Dale City Elementary, Neapsco, and Bel Air Elementary Schools to make sure the students and staff have what they need to start the year. I also attended the Garfield High School Back-to-School Night and met students and parents. Go Big Red! Today, I had a chance to visit Fannie Fitzgerald Elementary School with the First Lady of Virginia, Pamela Northram, came to see the great work of the students and staff. Great job to the principal and staff at Fitzgerald. Also, congratulations to all the wonderful new Neapsco principals and assistant principals. Welcome to our team. And finally, congratulations to Nathaniel, yeah, that's you back there waving, Provincio, former principal of Miniland, Minville Elementary School. He's always doing stuff. Who is now the Associate Superintendent of Eastern Elementary Schools. I'm looking forward to everyone having a awesome school year. Thank you. Have fun.
Mr. Trentum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I want to say, for the last time, welcome back, everyone. I hope you had a good summer. I do want to congratulate Al on our transportation folks. When I first came to this board, the first week, we were typically inundated with emails and calls and complaints about transportation issues and busing issues and things like that. This year, I think I had three. So, so the level of improvement is very noticeable. So, once again, congratulations. Hope everybody's off to a great, a great school year. Dr. Walts covered a lot of the, and John Lindley covered a lot of the facilities improvements that we've done. We put a lot of money into some of our older schools over the summer, and we're continuing to do so, which that's, that's a good thing. As we celebrate our back-to-schools, please remember that we've, there's a lot of kids down in North and South Carolina, and Georgia, and Florida, that are being, that are having to abandon their schools for the, for the next few days, and so, who knows what they'll come back to. So, just keep, keep them in your thoughts and prayers as well. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I got.
Wow. Outstanding. And that was your last first meeting of the school year?
Yep.
Well, thank you, Mr. Trentum. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if you haven't caught on, he has a countdown right there on his computer. Yes, 12 years, and I guess you're entitled to that. So, also, welcome back, welcome back to school, everybody. It was a fabulous opening day with lots of positive news broadcasts from local media highlighting Prince William County Schools, including Stonewall Jackson High School and Mountain View Elementary School. Wonderful, wonderful news coming from all of those. Prior to school starting, there were several, Ms. Ralston mentioned a backpack giveaway at Hilton High School. Student services from Prince William County Schools partnered with First Baptist Church Woodbridge and Hilton High School for a back-to-school fair that included backpack giveaways that the students fully stocked with what they needed, haircuts. There was food, there was information for families. It was a fabulous event. At the same time, same day, at Stonewall Middle School, Stonewall Middle School partnered with Honor Roll Ministries and McLean Bible Church to give out hundreds of backpacks. Also, they hosted a community fair, they had clothing games, snow cones, the snow cones were amazing. I got there for one of the last ones. And it was just an amazing event. It's been so exciting to see across the county, all of the efforts to help our students with back-to-school and help our families, and it's been really encouraging. Also, prior to school starting, it was a pleasure to attend and spend time at several of our back-to-school conferences, Triple E, the classified conference, and our Connect Conference for new teachers. It was great to see many of our employees. I was commenting to some of our staff members when we had Triple E for leadership teams in our schools. It was like a Prince William County Schools homecoming. It was so great to see everybody. Since the day after school started, I've been attending back-to-school nights. I look forward to attending more of them. We are scheduled to school board members through the first week of October with back-to-school night, so it's a big season for us. Dr. Walts referenced the clean schools. Our schools look absolutely amazing, Dr. Walts, and I commend all of our staff members, all of our custodians, who work so hard to make that happen. I saw the library at Stonewall Jackson High School that has new carpeting and flooring. It looks like a totally new space, and it was very exciting to see that. Our students and staff love it. In the background this summer, there has been some constant conflict in Prince William County Schools. Everything hasn't always been awesome, and I'm very happy to give credit where credit's due, but it's also important to make sure that when there are serious problems, we hold people accountable. Mr. Deutsch mentioned the issues surrounding the Prince William County Schools Aquatics Center with the project that was proposed. As stewards of our taxpayer dollars, the school board should have first received information about that project from administration, not members of the media, and Mr. Wallingford did explain some of that a few minutes ago. During the Jenkins Elementary Situation, school board members were initially informed by county, not school staff, and I'm concerned over the lack of initiative to provide information to the school board. Mr. Chairman, in light of these concerning events, I'd like to ask for an agenda item at our next meeting to discuss in closed session how the school board is going to hold senior staff members accountable for these communication issues, these breakdown of communications with the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. So, welcome back, everyone. We're excited about the new school year. I think Mr. Trentum pointed out very, very nicely, my, my first, first school year was last year, and the number of emails on transportation issues was just blowing up the email box. This year, I mean, it's like crickets. So, I can't thank our facilities folks and Mr. Wallingford. You guys did a fantastic job addressing the issues, and with the current continued shortage of school bus drivers, you have done an outstanding job of making sure our kids get back, back and forth safely. What an outstanding start to the hub this year. This is great. Parents are talking about it, very excited. Students like it. It is modern and exciting to work with, and everyone's enthusiastic about it. I spoke at the professional conferences this summer, giving introductory remarks, and I, I think the, the most enthusiastic applause is when we spoke to the counselors, and we said we added 47 new counselors and mental health workers to reduce ratios across the board in all elementary, middle, and high school. That was the most enthusiastic applause, and I think it's well-deserved, and I thank the school board for voting on that in last year's budget. I think that was one of our most major accomplishments this year. Along with the 4.8% raise, as Dr. Walts pointed out, they got to sign their contracts electronically. It's just, it's not just a teacher raise, it's all division employees, including custodians, cafeteria workers, and it's well-deserved. And I am excited to start this school year out with them. We are at the beginning of a school year. Every student's slate, you know, is cleaner than it was at the end of last year. I'm enthusiastic and optimistic about the school year. I would emphasize to parents, as, as Dr. Walts pointed out in his slides, you know, our parents and our guardians are extremely important. I encourage you to join your PTAs, join the boosters, support the schools, do whatever you can to help your students succeed. Help us help your students succeed by reaching out to us when you need to. And, and for our students, take advantage of the opportunities that are there in the school for you. Reach out to your counselor, join your after-school programs. We have some amazing things going on in Prince William County Schools, and I, and I can't tell you enough about all of those great things. So, to the beginning of this school year, 2019-20, best wishes, and have a great evening, everyone. Meeting adjourned.